She submitted that S R three, I don't know. We need to collect. We can't. Did she say what her name is? That's fine.
Uh, not here.
What do I saw right here?
I know, I mean, it's.
She said where you normally sit.
They have changed it all then. I never turn my fall dreams to the end of the moon.
Okay.
I mean, one of them has.
I hear you, I work out for you.
Why didn't you give me one if I could only know?
Can you mark it out?
Really?
Yes.
I brought my own folder.
Okay. Good deal, good deal.
I'll be using.
We always think Alice in charge of winning.
Shirley, you're the one.
No, I did not hear from anybody's leg.
Go ahead and get started, William will be here in a minute. Um, opening session prayer being given by Wayne Taylor, Pledge of Allegiance by Jarman Hicks.
Let us pray. Our holy and righteous Father in heaven, it is with gratitude in our hearts that we approach your throne of mercy and grace and an attitude of prayer and thanksgiving. We're thankful for all of the blessings that come our way. We're especially grateful that we have health sufficient to be here this afternoon to serve Overton County Schools in this capacity. We pray that every decision that we make would be in harmony with your holy and inspired word. We pray for those that are sick and afflicted, especially for Julie Poston. And we pray that these people would be blessed as you would see fit for as they have need. We ask that if we're found faithful in the judgment, we can have a home in heaven. This is our prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you don't care, remain standing. Uh, Mr. Dotson's will do a special prayer for Ms. Julie.
Yeah, well, we need to lift Ms. Julie Poston up tonight, so let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, I thank you for this night, Lord. And Lord, I just come to you humbly and gratefully, Father, that you're going to heal Julie Poston tonight, Father. It's right where she's at in that room, Father. You just speak to that body and make it whole, Father, and get her back to work and her and back to her family where she needs to be, Father. I just ask that you're doing a miracle in her, Father, and Lord, she'd be able to come home in the next couple of weeks and be healthy and whole. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Number four, approval of amendment from the August eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Motion by Shirley Myers, second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda?
I had that one.
Uh, so we got one addition here for Richmond elementary, uh, boys and girls basketball team to, uh, play in the Smoky Mountain Holiday Hoop Tournament, December twentieth through the twenty-second. Uh, I'll pass this around for everybody to look at, but we'll put that on number item sixteen under new business, since it's not on there already. So, motion by Rick Dotson to add that.
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion?
What was the date?
Uh, December twentieth through December twenty-second. Any other additions or deletions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That'd be number sixteen under new business. Number six, approval of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. Motion by Wayne Taylor, second by James Class, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, we have nothing under executive action, uh, consent. Uh, we'll do all these at one time. Uh, number one, letters of resignation from the following, Melissa Savage, Vicki Phillips, Jade Hicks, Lipe O'Connor, and Jesse Harvey, those were emailed in your attachments. Number two, the quarterly report was also emailed in the attachments. Number three, Livingston Academy Boys Basketball Trip, uh, November twenty-ninth through November thirtieth, uh, to Lincoln Memorial in Harrogate, Tennessee. Number four, Livingston Academy Boys Basketball Tournament Trip, December nineteenth through December twenty-second to Universal Studios in Florida. Number five, Livingston Academy Girls Basketball Tournament Trip, December twenty-seventh through December thirtieth to Somerville High School in Somerville, South Carolina. Entertained a mo- motion by James Class, second by Ashley Carr, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under new business, number one, elect twenty twenty-three, twenty-four board chairman. Uh, based on our board policy, this will rotate by district, so the next district in line is District Two.
I nominate James Class.
So we have a nomination for James Class.
I liked a second, Ben.
Second, uh, by Shirley Myers. Uh, let's go through roll call. Sorry, Crystal.
Uh, William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Number two, elect twenty twenty-three, twenty-four board vice chairman. Based on our board policy, that would be the other constituent in District Two.
I nominate Wayne.
So a nomination by James Class for Wayne Taylor, second by Mitch Stonecifer. Uh, any discussion? We'll roll call that as well, sorry.
Nope, that's all right. Uh, Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Uh, number three, elect twenty twenty-three, twenty-four T L M representative.
I nominate Shirley Myers.
Oh, I have to go to Nashville all by myself.
Shirley Myers, by Wayne Taylor, a second by Alice Reed. Um, any discussion on that? Let's roll call that one as well.
Ricky, I'm taking.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Congratulations to everyone. Um, number four, consider approval of the revised twenty-three, twenty-four Overton County Support Personnel Pay Schedule. Uh, that was in your attachments three, there's no financial change to that. The only change was for the, um, transportation supervisor, the name change was transportation coordinator on the pay scales, so. Any motion to approve that?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by James Class, any discussion? Uh, we've already approved the financial, so we'll just, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, consider approval of the Overton County Coaching Supplements. Uh, that attachment four, plus you've got a copy in your packet. Uh, so before we take a motion, we just need to determine, uh, we had different options for the countywide athletic director. There's a three thousand dollar option, there's a forty-five hundred, uh, whatever y'all decide, but everything else is the same. Uh, the only change was on the original, when we talked about the girls and, uh, boys soccer was two different amounts. Uh, I just made that line up to twelve hundred each. Uh, so I missed that one on the first one, but everything else is what we talked about last time. So when we make a motion, we just need to determine the countywide athletic director pay.
What was it last year, Mike?
The countywide athletic director didn't get anything.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What's the adjoining counties?
Uh, I haven't checked on that. Um, I know like for high school, um, like they don't get a pay for it because they get a block to prepare. Uh, you know, because they gotta do what T W S double A and everything. Uh, but I hadn't checked on the adjoining counties. I know we've talked several times. We've talked about three thousand, we've talked about forty-five hundred, we've talked about six thousand. Um, I mean, Miss Riddle deals with countywide sports, uh, all the coaches countywide. Um, so just whatever that something like y'all decided to put on there. I mean, since it was nothing, we could start at three, if you want to look later on down the road and kind of adjust it from there and see what other counties do. Um, whatever decision y'all make.
Well, I think it depends on the duties. If, if, if during this job, they're going to be required to attend sporting events, be the administration, that type thing, it should be forty-five hundred. But if it's like it's current event, all they do is set the rules, and everybody depends on themselves, then it shouldn't be a forty-five hundred dollars, so, by opinion. So I think the duty should reflect the actual price they're on with.
Agree.
I refer everybody that has a sports question to them. I mean, if you don't like the schedules or whatever, I'd say call Leslie Riddle, she's the countywide athletic, so. I think a lot of the public, she talks to.
So we were looking at Putnam County, when we were doing this, the Putnam County Schools, they don't have a countywide. Each school has their own.
Gotcha.
And each school there gets six thousand dollars. So, we're asking her to do it countywide. Um, I mean, I'll go on with whatever the group wants to, but I mean, we won't be competitive in pay, it has, we have to be competitive in every area. So I recommend that we deal with a higher level.
I agree.
So is your motion forty-five?
Uh, I move it, we adopt the forty-five hundred dollar proposal.
Okay, so we got a motion for, um, the coaching supplement schedule with the county wide athletic director, forty-five hundred. We got a second motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by Shirley Myers. Any discussion on that? Let's roll call that, Crystal.
Real quick, I, uh, so I'm sorry. I know that, what are the job duties of that? I know they're speaking with the public, they're setting the rules and everything, but what all is involved in that job?
Yeah, they, they meet with all the coaches, they set all the rules, because we're not part of T E M, S A K, uh, the Middle School Association, so they'll make their own internal rules there. Uh, you deal with all the coaches. Any parent concerns with coaches? Uh, I mean, pretty much. Yeah, I mean, any issues that come up sports-wise, it's ran through Miss Riddle over there, but you know, to Jarman's point, uh, they're not required to attend sporting events or things like that, I mean. So we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's roll call, Crystal.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Uh, number six, consider approval of the kids' first pediatric therapies contract for occupational therapy and speech therapy services, that would sit in your attachments as well. Motion by Ashley Carr, second with Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, uh, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four Title One A Revision One. Motion by, was it Jarman or Jarman Hicks, second by James Class, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four Carl Perkins Revision Three. That was in your attachments as well. Motion by James Class, second by Shirley Myers, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four I D E A Part B Revision Two. That was in your package as well.
So moved.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four T N Tennessee All Core Original Budget, that was in your package as well. Motion by James Class, second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four I D E A Partnership for Systematic Change K Twelve Original Budget. Again, that was in your attachments or your email as well. Motion by Ashley Carr, second by James Class, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four Access for Learning Network K Eight Original Budget. Motion by Rick Dotson?
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four Carl Perkins Reserve Original Budget, that was in your package as well. Motion by Rick Dotson?
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion?
What is this? What is the reserve money for Carl Perkins?
Occasionally, they give additional funds, we didn't get it, I don't think, last year. So, uh, we get Carl Perkins funding, which is for vocational, basically the vocational program, the federal funding of the vocational side. Um, and addition, um, occasionally, we get additional funds for Perkins Reserve, and that's what this one is.
Leftover. Gotcha.
Do we get a motion and second on that?
Uh, Perkins Reserve, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four One Forty-One General Purpose Schools Revision One. Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, consider approval of Overton County Board of Education Resolution, Tennessee College of Applied Technology. Uh, that was in your packet as well. Yep.
I'd like to talk to that. Um, it's my understanding that they are considering a merger between the Livingston and the Crossville T Cats, as far as there being one president to be over both campuses. And, uh, I've had several people reach out to me, representatives and so forth, to reach out to me to see if, to see how we, as a board, felt about that. Uh, uh, especially Representative Kelly Keyes wanted to talk to me about it. Um, and they were requiring if we wanted to develop a resolution to support, um, the campus leadership and entities remaining separate, if that's what we wanted to do. Um, if we wanted them to remain separate, uh, if that was our desire, then we could, uh, have our board attorney to draw up a resolution stating so. So, I just wanted to present that to you all and get your opinions on it.
If you combined them, who chooses the person that would run the combined ticket?
Still the board regents. The board regents would pick the president.
What's the advantage? That's what I wondered, they've been that way.
Of them being together? I don't know of an advantage of them being together, I don't, I don't know the pros and cons, but, um, it, I've been told that our, our campus here in Livingston has, uh, is like the second highest amount of students, uh, than anywhere in the state. So my point in saying that, and, and I'm not trying to convince anyone of anything, but if we're doing really well as it is, I would think that we, uh, I, I wonder if we might want to continue, um, as it is.
I agree.
I think, I think the more we have.
That's my thoughts on that.
I think the more we have local community grassroots stuff, you know, collaboration, I think the better off we all are.
And my fear on this is that it will be somebody who will spend most of the time in Crossville and we will get short into the state.
I think they should stay separate.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone. It ain't broke.
Don't fix it. Leave it, yeah.
Well, if you give that to motion?
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution, uh, for us to keep it like it is.
Yes.
Motion by William, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
No.
You make the motion. Okay, motion by James Klaus, second, but William Abston, any other discussion? Uh, let's roll call that one.
And just so we're clear, we're making the resolution that they stay separate.
Correct. Correct. Sorry, Crystal.
Nope, that's all right. Oh, Craig, William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
And Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero, opposed.
Uh, then number sixteen, consider approval for all every school boys and girls basketball teams to play in the Smoky Mountain Holiday Hoop Tournament in Somerville from December twentieth to December twenty-second.
I make a motion.
Motion by Rick Dotson, second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under special recognition, O C E A, Mr. Jennifer Odom.
Another good evening. It's hard to believe we're halfway through the first nine weeks. I think everybody's kind of settling in and getting into a, a rhythm with the school year and we'll turn our heads and it'll be fall break already, so. Uh, just want to offer our concern and prayers for Miss Julie Poston, we hope that she's up and at 'em soon. And, uh, hope everybody's had a good year.
Thank you. Uh, no public comment, Crystal?
Nope.
Nobody's. All right, so that's the end of our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think we should all thank Mike Hayes and your children.
I agree.
The banner.
Appreciate it. Motion by Rick Dotson, second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Everybody good in the work session?
Follow line.
Follow line. Um, under the work session, number one, uh, public school security grant update.
Our, our safety committee met on, uh, the seventh of September, and, uh, the items, items discussed were the distance results of the security assessment that's conducted in the spring. Um, and, and also the one-time funding through the public security grant. The, the public security grant is the money that, uh, that Bill Lee proposed to give to all the districts. I think a lot of it was in response to the, to that, to the shooting in Nashville. Uh, and Overton County was awarded a hundred and twenty-three thousand, a hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents through that grant. So this, this committee, uh, met and discussed, um, and they determined the highest priority and the needs of our district. Um, and they determined that the highest need was security cameras. Uh, either the addition of cameras or the upgrade to enhance the, the clarity of what the ones we already have. Uh, Mr. Thrasher threw the information about the, uh, provided information about a different company, it's called I Pro, that is being, uh, used at two of the schools with much success. There's another company, and I barely came to say its name, Avion, I think that's how you said, Avion, is the company that most of our schools are currently using. Uh, an estimated figure of twelve thousand dollars per school would most likely cover the expense to upgrade the camera system. And there would be some additional licensing costs, so, so that would round the figure around to around seventy-five thousand dollars. And items considered for the remaining funds, which is approximately forty-eight thousand, uh, were additional fencing, speed bumps and bollards. Bollards are those big yellow, uh, posts that they put up in front of windows, doors. Uh, and then the bullet resistance film that, that we talked about quite a bit.
That goes on the do, on the doors?
Doors and windows.
I, I like that.
But there were some principles, uh, at this meeting, and they, they felt, um, they, they were very interested in the cameras first, it's the first thing they were very interested in. I just thought I would mention that to you, what they talked about.
And that, they've got enough grant money to pay for all that.
Yes, it is.
Any questions on that? Uh, item number two, uh, discuss substitute teacher pay. Uh, I actually brought that up to Crystal, uh, with the raises we gave, starting in July, uh, the dollar an hour. Uh, I know now if, um, somebody goes in and subs for a E A cafeteria, uh, wherever they're at, uh, they was at, what, ten dollars an hour?
Yes.
Uh, with seven and a half hours, seventy-five dollars. Uh, and a certified sub pay, seventy-five dollars, so. In reality, if I'm an E A and got three kids, just hypothetically speaking, you know, I may say I want to go sub for an E A that's got three kids and make the same amount of money as I would go through a full classroom. And so, so we may want to look at, you know, the non-certified, certified sub pay, uh, because, uh, the E A pay, the cafeteria pay, all that, uh, falls back to the new rate of, well, it will fall back to whatever we decide, so. If we decide to go to eighty-five dollars an hour, then divide eighty-five by seven and a half, and that'll be kind of that pay too.
You mean eighty-five dollars a day?
A day. A day, I'm sorry, eighty-five a day. I'm sorry, eighty-five per day. Uh, and I have heard some comments that, you know, Putnam County's paying upwards of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty bucks a day for a sub, and you know, uh, we got certified, it's making, what is it, ninety-five? You'll drive down there for fifty more bucks a day, you know, so. Uh, easy decision, so that's something to think about. Uh, if we want to kind of put that on the agenda for next month, uh, approve a new one, we can kind of look at that and approve a new sub pay if we want to look at that.
What, what does a certified and a non-certified sub pay?
Right now, a non-certified, correct me if I'm wrong, is seventy-five, and a certified is ninety-five?
Yes.
Yeah, seventy-five and ninety-five.
And, so, we really need to find out what people around are paying people there, so.
Yeah, I've heard, I don't know that, to be fair, I've heard Putnam was one forty, I mean, it was about fifty bucks extra per day, I think. So if you can find that out before next week.
I, I was told that there's a, a neighboring district that was going to go to a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day.
Yes.
Was that Putnam?
It's probably Florida.
Who, who?
Putnam, Florida.
Why, yeah.
So I, people around here would drive down there for double pay.
Well, we also need to make sure that, um, how much we're paying our teachers per day, because you don't want to have the subs making more than the teachers making a day.
Well, I mean, you lower in that, at, at a minimum, they start out, what, what's the new rate, forty-two?
Forty-two.
So forty-two divided by two-hundred-day contract, or two-ten a day.
Just an opinion, uh, I think Jarman's opinion is the non-certified should be about a hundred and twenty-five, certified should be about a hundred and fifty. That's just Jarman's opinion.
Did y'all hear of Jarman?
No.
He said his opinion was non-certified, one-twenty-five, and certified, a hundred and fifty per day.
When I was at Putnam County, you had to have a teaching certificate to get the big bucks. You just didn't have a college degree.
And, and that's still, even at that pay grade, that's still a fifty-dollar a day difference from what William's talking about as far as uh, place.
Before our next meeting, Donnie.
Pardon me?
Before our next meeting, can we look at the financial impact if we were to go from seventy-five, ninety-five to a one-twenty-five, one-fifty? How would it affect us annually?
Well, you gotta look at it more just financial impact, you gotta look at having actually people in our schools. Because you have to, legally have to, whether you can afford it or not, you have to.
I don't disagree with you, but I still, still like, not a financial impact is, will it?
Here's one, one concern I've got, and I know they need more money, I agree. But a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, are they, are they gonna start out more than the EA that's there at full-time the whole year for us?
What's an EA make a day? Sure.
Is it twelve dollars?
Twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars starting off.
And like I said, there are custodians, you bookkeepers and all that, they're gonna, is this sub gonna come in and make more pay than the regular person we got working all year long?
Well, if you do a hundred and twenty-five a day divided by seven and a half hours, you're at sixteen sixty-seven an hour. So.
And a custodian topped out is fourteen twenty-four in fifteen years.
Also, aid never has the complete responsibility of a classroom, whether you're a certified or a non-certified. You're the only person in that classroom doing that job. And aid most likely is with another teacher.
But you have those kids that have those bad behaviors too, you know.
Well, you could pay them more. We pay special ed teachers more, CDC teachers more.
I just want it to be far across the board, that's why I signed up all my mess. They'll consider how I want to do this.
Do we still require a certified teacher for a, a leave, Don? A certified teacher for the, a leave, do we require it?
If they're after twenty days, twenty days, if they're out twenty days and I stay.
So that twentieth day, the certified has to come in and do the rest of the leave, even if it's a six-week deal?
One thing we also need to keep in mind too, that we're gonna understand how much the ranking today. We need to look at the total compensation package, because there's more benefits that we're giving, that we're not taking into consideration when it's just, we're talking about twelve dollars an hour, but now we are paying for everybody to have Cadillac insurance and all of that, so we can take that into consideration also.
Yeah, well, I don't have insurance and.
Well, I, I'm with Jarman, I mean, if we don't do something, then we're not gonna have any at all.
Well, what's gonna happen is, is.
And if you don't have any, who runs the class?
They call, they're gonna just no show us and go directly to leave. I think that's already happened.
With the retired certified teachers that did not take the buyout, do they not make more than this? The ones who took it, of course, do not, but do we have any retired certified teachers that did take the buyout that now subs?
You mean that sub?
And that sub? Yes. Do they not?
They don't have a leave.
They don't have a. Teacher didn't have.
That come up sometime, that.
Yes.
They, they would get that pay if the teacher that they are subbing for didn't have any sick days.
But that's always been that way. If they had no sick days, then that certified sub got their stuff, based on your degree.
So, so will, Dr. Holman can kind of see what the financial impact is, kind of lay it on the board at one-twenty-five and one-fifty. Uh, right now is kind of the way it's laid out there, so.
And I think, um, I think that maybe we should come up with something, I know that over the next few years, it's going to increase. All pay's gonna increase on there. Instead of us having to go back every single time and do this, how about we say, okay, we're going to pay a substitute, a certified substitute seventy-five percent of what a teacher makes. So if they're making two hundred and ten dollars, that's about a hundred and fifty dollars. So it can adjust every year based on that increase without us having to go back and vote on it every single year.
Are we talking about a beginning teacher?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, if we do that, the base salary of that, then we can say, okay, they're gonna make seventy-five percent or eighty percent, and then a non-certified's going to make sixty percent. And then that way, it can adjust itself as we go forward, instead of us having to come back and vote every single time.
Yeah, that's a good point, because every year that minimum goes up.
Yes.
You don't have to change it, because right now, out to, to Jarman's numbers, if you use the hundred and twenty-five for a non-certified, that's sixty percent of a teacher pay, and certified is one-fifty, that's seventy-one percent. So you could do sixty and seventy, or sixty and seventy-five, or however you did that, just leave that percentage number there, and it would be the percentage of the year zero teacher.
Yeah, and I think that's the way that we should do it, so we're not having to do this every single time. It will autocorrect itself as it goes.
That's a good point.
And unfortunately, that's how we, those numbers have got so far behind.
Yep, absolutely.
What happens when you, a certified sub, subs for someone that has been here eighteen or twenty years, that makes more money? Same thing, seventy-five percent of the.
No, he said the base salary.
Just the base salary of all teachers, regardless of their pay.
It would be the base of the year zero teacher, the minimum, forty-two thousand. Next year, obviously, in three years, it's going to.
They'll make fifty thousand dollars. So the sub, certified subpay would go up if you're gonna do.
Correct.
Seventy-five percent.
And if we locally, five years down the road, decided to go up, and that sub would go up too, based on the percentage.
Okay.
So that way, we never have to bother with sub again, unless we get to a point that nobody's subbing in, you know.
Then we can increase the percentages.
Yeah.
Is it harder to get substitutes for the special ed department?
Can you get teachers?
I'm sure it probably is, but um, it's just hard to get them in general sometimes. And we can make an allowance for that, say if you're sub, subbing in a special ed setting, you're gonna get this percentage.
Because they do get a different percentage.
Well, and another thing on there is, any area that it's hard for us to find a sub in, then we should probably do five percent extra or ten percent extra, because that's saying, hey, you know, we understand this is a hard position to find, we're gonna pay you a little bit extra to come do this.
And those special ed CDC teachers behavior, they get that five thousand dollar differentiated pay. And if you divided that by two hundred days, that's twenty-three eighty per day. So I mean, if you wanted to tap that on and say, hey, if you're subbing for SPAD, CDC, whatever, then you get twenty-three eighty supplement per day. Uh, because that would equate to that differentiated pay. I mean, however you all can do it, but.
Would that just be the C, the CDC and the behavior?
And special ed.
That, that's.
Those of the special ed, like differentiated.
Differentiated. I think that's, that's the way they want to kind of do with this sub.
But I think that would probably be our best bet on doing that, because it will autocorrect as we go through the future, and we don't have to worry about every single time that pay raise happens going back and voting something.
Then if the differentiated pay changed, then obviously it's divided by two hundred, and that's what the base would be.
Good idea.
You understand that, Sharon?
It's sure he gets it, we all can do it.
Alright, so, so think about it, Dr. Holman will kind of see what the financial impact is uh, for the next meeting, and uh, we just put that on their agenda to kind of prove something and go from there, so.
My only concern is, like I said, there, an EA, a custodian invite starts out twelve dollars an hour, so that's ninety-six dollars a day. And if, if this house has insurance, they're gonna say, hey, I'm gonna make a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, so they leave an EA spot or custodian spot or a secretary spot open. So are we gonna get it all, or we just think swapping something back to another position, another position is open, or, I mean, it's a lot to look at there. I know I would, if I'd make a ninety-six dollar day, I could make a hundred and twenty-five if I had insurance, it would be a no-brainer.
Yeah, and unfortunately, every time we make one change, it affects something.
We gotta figure it all out, right?
An EA is a guaranteed job every day.
Yeah.
A sub day you don't, a sub you may or may not have to walk every day.
But most of the time, I think.
Well, these days, yeah.
You've worked every day you wanted to work.
But when you give that sub pay up, you may not have as many days that you can't find people.
True.
You may have more people competing for those positions, and there may be less sub days available.
Alright, anything else on that? Alright, moving on to number three, uh, new SRO security requirements. Uh, so just want to let you know, especially James, that should be taking up the chair in the next month. Started in July with the new safety laws and the, the new laws that came out. Anytime an SRO finds a unsecured door, any safety issue at a school, they have to email the director of schools, the chairman of the board, the principal, uh, Department of Homeland Security, uh, State of Tennessee, the sheriff's department, the chief of police, everybody. Uh, so, and this can eventually get to the point where it's tied to your TISA money, uh, from security, uh, if these aren't
Kept.
Secure all the time. Um, I will say, over the last three, four weeks, I know there's probably what, four or five?
Six or seven.
Came out emails, uh, almost every school, uh, that's, you know, they've checked, the door's been shut, but not secured. Um, so I know Dr. Holman, when I first got the email, I was like, what is this? Uh, then we started looking back, and that's part of the new state law that they have to do. Um, so he's discussed it at his principal meeting, and obviously, it's a huge concern.
We're gonna discuss it again this Friday at our principal's.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Goes back to one of my comments earlier on when we were talking about safety, I think every external door should have an alarm on it, and that way you know that it's unsecured, and you can correct it before we get in trouble with their potentially losing money.
One thing that I would like to have our maintenance people go around and check every single door. One, to make sure that nothing's settled and it's separated enough, that if you pull it hard enough, you can get it open. Two, that any of the locks that may stick, if you lock it and unlock a door, and then you do that, it doesn't completely release from there and stick. I think that we should go and have all of that checked also, just to make sure that everything's working properly, so we don't have a mix-up with somebody actually putting the key in, locking the door, thinking it's locked. They come through, they pull it, and it comes out. We've done that two, at least two times, and I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done again, but we've done that at least twice. When this first started, I mentioned it to Steve Bosley, and they went around to every door, wrapping them, uh, and they've gone back another time since then. I, I think what we're dealing with a lot is, is just an issue that just, of the door just not coming all the way closed. And we've just got to train our teachers and everybody going out, that you've got to stand there and wait and let it shut and make sure it locks. And that's the paper that I gave you all, is the writing, the reading on that law, forty-nine, six, eight, seventeen. Uh, and it tells you on the second time, they can hold two percent, the third time, four percent, and it goes up to ten percent of your TISA funding per school. And then, to add on to what Michael was saying, um, Mike and I, every time a door is left open, he and I and those other five entities get this email notifying us about that. And then I have forty-eight hours to, to respond to all those people on every door, and there's certain criteria that I have to go through and answer. And that's what I was doing before the meeting here, I was in there answering, I was responding to those people, um, about these doors. I have to tell them if there's SROs at that school that are full-time, um, call to our plan of action, see if this doesn't happen again, see if it was corrected at the time. And there's some other things that I have to answer on every door that is left open. And I have a certain amount of time to get it done in. And I think that we need to, during the summer there, make sure that at least once a year, those doors are getting checked again, so we can just make sure they're maintained the way they're supposed to. Because I know even where I work at, if you're opening a door, opening and closing it a hundred times, eventually, the thing that pulls it back shut's gonna go out.
Yeah, and I think maybe these, uh, school-based maintenance folks too, if they could come, walk around during the day and kind of do another check too, because if we can find one that's shut before, um, you know, SROs find it, it'd be great too.
How often are SROs going there checking doors at every?
I think twice a day.
At least twice.
Twice a day.
And I've only had, and if there's a, if there's a, a, a school that doesn't have that thing done each day, I get a report at the end of the day. Mr. Thrasher has it fixed where I get a report. And since this has began, I've only had a report at one school, uh, that this wasn't, that the doors weren't, weren't checked, so.
Yeah, and, and I think it goes more down to, uh, just that school hours, I mean, you've got booster clubs that go in and out and things of that nature. I think one of them was LA, and it was at four-thirty in the afternoon, there was a back door open, so it could have been a sports team or, you know, I mean, coaches and everybody need to be involved in making sure.
That's true.
That they're secure too, so. Alright, any, anything else on that? Um, just a reminder, uh, the twenty-sixth of September is the Fall District Meeting in Trousdale County. Uh, then the building program, I emailed you all the presentation that I'm gonna present to the Education Committee, it's gonna be the eighteenth uh, at five o'clock, and that's gonna be at the new, uh, Miller Oakley Building, uh, upstairs, that's where the Education Committee meets, so.
What date, Mike?
Uh, the.
Eighteenth?
I think that's right, at five o'clock. And if you all see something on that presentation, you think we should add to that, just let me know. Alright, James, you got anything? William? Mitch?
Yeah.
Jarman?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. There've been some questions raised, and I know we've looked at this in the past, our schools don't have emergency generators. So when the substa, this Wilson substation went out a couple weeks ago, we had three thousand people trying to get down all the bleachers over here at the high school in the dark. And I know it costs money, but we've got money. We need, I think we need to look into just the cost.
Of a backup generator?
Generator for the school, yes.
I could hear from my house, and then I heard someone yell that it was a.
I mean.
A, a tornado.
Well, even in that instance, if it just ran some emergency lights so people could get out to their vehicle, you know, I'm not saying we have to light up the world, but we need something in our schools that, in the event that something like that happened, or power was out for an extended period of time, for days. We, we would have some type of backup. And speaking on the high school, um, I had a call, um, about maybe a medical issue on the weekend over there at the, the high school. And there were some issues with the EMS being able to actually physically get over to, um, the vehicle.
I think we've worked on that.
Okay.
Uh, if, if our, uh, there was people that had these, they called them lean tubes up against the fence, so Mr. Milton and Leslie Riddle have talked to them, uh, about not having the lean tubes up against the fence, so that the road access is clear. And then, once the, uh, ambulance got all the way around over to the home side, once they got over there, they weren't able to get out because of some of the bollards, you know, some of those yellow cone things that are in the, so there's two of those that they're gonna remove, so that the, the ambulance wouldn't have to come all the way back around again, they could just go right on out. So there's two of those they're gonna remove, and, and these, these lean tubes, these people with the lean tubes, they're, they're not gonna have those there anymore.
When you say lean tubes, are those pop-up tanks?
It's pop-up tanks. Yeah, that was what I was gonna bring up, so come on, until he said to emergency generator. Because I, I guess I got the same phone calling, we, Ms. Riddle and I, we've been working on it.
Anything else, Jarman?
No, I'll give my estimation out of that.
Crystal?
None.
Charlie?
I agree with the backup light for the, the stadium, that might happen more often than we think. And I had friends that went, and they couldn't, they weren't sure about getting out to their car.
Yeah.
I, I had one concern, I was at Wilson, uh, last week in the maintenance minutes, there, Mr. Anderson showed me a gym door. I, I'm sure it doesn't open when the, when the security go, when, uh, Mr. Officer Commander goes by, but it, it didn't seem safe to me. And he said he needed a, um, kit to fix it. It was very loose. And I, I felt like that somebody could have jerked it open that it wanted to. I'm sure when he checks it, he doesn't open it.
I'll work on that, give that.
I think, just, just in case, it may be the same one. I know Jim did order a part for a gym door at Wilson, it may be the same one.
Alright, that's it.
One more thing, well, just, uh, just last night to let you know if you want to go to the Fall District Meeting on the twenty-sixth. I have Sunday on, but just to be anybody wanted to air, got you there. Uh, yes.
Um, I want to go.
Got you.
Charles, got you. No, I'm all right with Johnny. I said, I, I said tomorrow, so it's Crystal, and she's not going, so I, she's gonna be done.
Alright, thanks.